The November 20th meeting of the Manona City Council, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Moore?
Here.
Alder Coor?
Here.
Alder Holmquist?
Here.
Alder Spate?
Here.
Alder Wood?
Here.
Alder Kitslar?
Here.
Alder Kitslar is joining us via phone. Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the November 6th, 2017, meeting?
Second.
Any corrections, comments?
I do, I have a correction. On page three, Amendment 1804, on the third sentence, it says she will provide goals or attach goals, and I did. Instead, it should read that she did attach communication goals, because they were attached to the...
Got it.
And then also, just to clarify, I also was not saying that the purpose of the consultancy was to find out the need for a full-time person, it was to conduct an assessment of our communications needs and the type of staffing or capacity building needed to fulfill them. So I wasn't saying it was only...
I don't know where you're talking, please.
Sorry?
Is it the next line? Is that what you mean?
Yeah. Where the purpose of the consultancy would be to do a needs assessment and determine what we need to address our communication. I wasn't saying it was only related to a full-time position. You see where it says "full-time"?
So what is needed, instead of what is there?
Right, right.
Okay. Anything else? All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Appearances, let's see, we have several people who have registered about the Amendment 1803, which is the additional firefighter paramedic. Those who have registered in favor, Brian Hillibrand, 2107 Jovena Street, Cross Plains, Brian Swetler, 1995 Lewis Street, Cross Plains, Taylor Hamm, 4911 Rothman Place, Manona, Chris Vernig, 2013 Carver Street, I'm assuming that's Madison.
Yeah.
Brendan Cornell, 825 Callisto Drive, Madison, Alex Boden, 3724 Robert Nelson Road, Deerfield, Dan Ecklaw, 5408 McKenna Road, Manona, Alex Rosnick, 312 Skyland Way, Deerfield, and Robert Nelson, 302 Starry Avenue. Then in addition, two others have registered to speak. The first up is Mary Ann Reed, and she will be followed by Larry Reed. If you could state your name and address.
Mary Ann Reed, 5602 Wunacoa Road, Manona. I've been a lifelong resident of Manona with the exception of a one-year gap, and a homeowner in Manona since 1983. Back in the days of Manona Village, many members of the city crew were also members of the fire department. Since then, the city has outsourced many of these services to private companies and no longer has this response resource in the city. I was a citizen member of the committee that looked at the future of the fire department. I volunteered to be the citizen member when I heard they were looking for one, because I felt that from my past experience as a volunteer EMT, a 31-year career in the ER, served on numerous county, city of Madison, regional, state of Wisconsin committees concerning disaster response, disaster management, and hazardous materials response, and hazardous materials patient care. So therefore, I thought I had some of the vocabulary, I had some of the understanding of the wearing, tearing, individual's body from handling a hose with water pressure coming out that much, that it's not just one person, like a garden hose, a sense of when you have your turnout gear and your SCBA, your breathing apparatus on, how you have to rotate people out because they become tired. I also had a sense of how many different roles need to be fulfilled in a working structure fire to keep it safe and to actually get the job done. So that's why I volunteered to be part of that committee. And that committee did look at many different options, including having the city of Madison Fire take over fire and EMS services for Manona. We interviewed people from other suburban communities in Dane County to talk about how they were meeting their challenges of actually nationwide trend of higher demands for more skilled services and a shrinking pool of volunteers. So we looked at all that. We came up with the recommendations to support our volunteers and keep our volunteers, but also to augment the paid professional staff, too. We were very mindful of budgetary needs for the city of Manona when we made our recommendations, too.
Could you just clarify, is this, are you talking about the staffing committee from a couple of years ago?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Manona has grown and changed. You have aging, a higher aging population from when it was a village, there's higher density, there's more 3, 4-plus-story buildings, it was only 1 1/2 and 2-story buildings in the beginning. Also, there have been changes in building materials and building techniques and the way buildings are furnished, so that now when there's a fire, the fire will burn faster and hotter and produce more poisonous smoke than in days in the past. And so you really need a very robust, quick response to fire calls. I think about, and that's changed even in the last 10 years, I think about our paid staff is kind of like being the bones of the body, the bones of the system, and the volunteers who are equally professional as the paid staff but earn their living elsewhere are the muscles. And you really need the muscles to attach to the bones, and the bones need the muscles if you're going to move. So I urge you to fund this position, strengthen the bones of our fire department, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Larry Reed.
My name is Larry Reed. I live at 5602 Wunacoa Road in Manona, and I'm speaking in favor of the additional position for the fire department. I'm on the city's Public Safety Commission, and public safety is something that's important to me. I was on the fire department for 30 years. Five of those years, I was one of the paid people. And EMS was new. We probably had 80 members on the service at that time, and we ran three shifts a day, seven days a week. And there were sometimes arguments to get on a shift. And now, there are very few volunteers on the ambulance service. And in that time, the training requirements have continually gone up, to the point where it takes so much time to maintain your training and proficiency, that people just don't have that kind of time to volunteer. There were no EMTs, or, I mean, no paramedics, only EMTs. And gradually, you had an EMT intermediate position, and then paramedic. And all of those standards increased over time. The same thing happened in the fire service. Training standards, response standards, equipment standards have gone up over that last 40 years. And we don't have as many volunteers, because people don't have time to keep up with those training requirements. Our daughter is a member of the Maple Bluff Fire Department. She's a firefighter and an EMT. And we looked at her EMT training manual for basic level. It was three times the size of the manual that Mary Ann and I used when we trained to be EMTs. It contained skills that didn't exist in scene awareness, terrorism, hazardous materials awareness. And it's just very hard to ask a citizen to volunteer to do this, so we rely more and more on the paid people. When I left the Manona Fire Department, I went to work for the Wisconsin Division of Emergency Management, and I worked there for 27 years. I started out working in the area that did off-site planning for nuclear power plants. And when I retired, I was a deputy administrator. So I continually moved up through the agency. And through moving up through the agency, I had the opportunity to participate in planning and response and recovery activities at the state, the local, and the national level. And one of the things that I noticed in all of those years, working at all of those levels of government, is, in my opinion, no level of government paid the attention that they should to disaster response. An indication of that is that after Hurricane Katrina, FEMA tripled its staff. Wisconsin didn't add a single position to the Wisconsin Emergency Management Agency in that time period. So there are a lot of things pushing on the system. Mary Ann talked about our older population, the change in some of the building construction and materials that make fires burn quicker and hotter. And we definitely need the bones, and we need the muscle. So I would really urge the council to support that additional position at the fire department. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, I'll declare the appearances section closed. There is no public hearing. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second? All in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up, Item G, 1A, consideration of Resolution 17-11-2223, adopting the 2018 operating budget and establishing a tax levy. Mr. Haltaker, did you have an updated version of this, or a list of the... I was in the other room, so maybe I just didn't see it. Is there a list of the amendments or anything? Or is it just what we had last time?
Yeah, it's in the tab.
Okay. All right. I think what I'd like to do here, there's a few amendments that I think we can vote on right away, but then there are several others that we only have a limited amount of money, and the total amount of the amendments totals more than the amount of money we have available, which is $105,828 or something like that. So I'd like to discuss each of those other amendments, and then bring them to a vote afterwards, so we can all think about what we want to do in between there. But the First Amendment is one of those that I think we can vote on right away, Item 18-01, to adjust transportation aid to actual based on the Wisconsin DOR report. Mark, would you like to...
Yeah.
Is there a motion?
I'll move approval.
So I think we need a main motion first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is there a motion to approve the budget?
I'll move approval of the 2018 operating budget.
And is there a second? Second? Okay. Then is there a motion to approve Amendment Number 18-01?
So moved.
Second. Okay. All right.
Yeah, it was just the state put more money into the Department Transportation Fund, and we didn't get the information until actually the budget went out, so it's kind of adjusted to the actual, the amount that we received.
Any questions?
I just have a clarification. The 105 includes the 75, or this would be...
This will be, this will make it to the 105. This will get us not 105.
Do my math scorecard.
Yeah. Anything else?
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Amendment 1802, to eliminate $25,000 from the Gypsy Monster Spray Program because the city did not qualify for the program, is there a motion to approve? So moved. Second?
I'll second it.
Alder Kitslar, you sponsored this?
Yes. Following Dan Sifani's recommendation, we don't qualify for the Gypsy Monster Spray Program, so we're taking it out of the budget. And again, this is out of the fund balance.
Can people overhear him?
Okay. Any questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up, Item 18, and this is one which we will just discuss and vote on later. So John, we should move, but not vote? Is that the... If you'd like a... Should we move approval now, but not vote till later, or should we move approval later? I think you're going to move approval later, if you're not going to vote on it. So we can discuss it without moving approval? Yes. Okay. Amendment 18-03, to add one full-time fire paramedic staff position. This is put forth by Alders Kitslar, Moore, and Coor. Any particular one of you want to address this?
Well, I would certainly be happy to just very briefly say that I still believe strongly in this position. I understand the concern that was raised by some other Alders around the fact that the fire department has, according to our now nice new cheat sheet on position counts since 2006, you know, has in fact received, you know, more staff, as one could argue, than some other departments in terms of overall increases, and we certainly could use a lot of other staff. It's, you know, this is not to say that there aren't other needs that the city has. But I think probably, you know, the most poignant point that was made just a few minutes ago by the appearances and that I would echo is that the department has, you know, certainly increased in demand, and I know from my own experience how difficult it is to get volunteers to serve at any level, a few hours a week, never mind the kind of demands that are placed on EMS and fire. And so I think, you know, the investment in this position is still extremely important.
I'd just like to add what I talked about last time, the fact that we've looked at, no, we, the chief has looked at staffing this in creative ways. We tried to pay it on call, we tried to pay it on premise, and we just can't get the consistency that we would like to have. Our response times have been good, but we've had some points where we would like to improve, and having an additional firefighter will help us respond appropriately. We have an aging population, it's only getting older, requiring more care, so I think it's imperative that we approve this.
Alder Kitslar, did you want to add anything?
Not to echo what they said, but to reinforce that, you know, I do think public safety is the number-one priority that we need to provide our residents, and with an aging population, I think it's all more important for this position.
Okay. Just to reiterate, I didn't mention before, but this total amendment would come to $83,720 if it were to be funded, full-time for a full year.
Does that include the COVID allowance?
Yeah, the COVID allowance is already, I guess I screwed up when they took it out. I didn't adjust the COVID allowance, I thought it was, as the actual person was in there, so it's...
Oh, it's in the regular budget already?
It's already in the budget already.
Okay. So did you get that? Alder Kitslar?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right. So any other comments, questions? We're on to Amendment 4.
Well...
I'm sorry. Alder Wood?
I may as well go ahead and put on my black hat, or something. First, I'd like to really thank Leah for the worksheet put in, putting that position count together. I think it'll be helpful for us in a lot of different contexts. So basically, my concern is, as an Alder, we have to look at the needs of the entire city and not just one part of it. And we have increased the amount of resources that we've directed to firefighter, paramedic service since 2014, combined by about 37 1/2 percent. Total expenditures in the city at the same time increased 22 percent, so almost 50 percent or more than the city budget as a whole. In particular, I'd note that not only have we added two full-time firefighter positions in the last three years, we also, in 2014, the entire amount that went to what was called firefighter retention, I think that was mainly for volunteer firefighter payments at that time, and there was obviously no POP, paid-on-premise program, the amount then was $12,000. And if my recollection is correct, it had actually been lower than that in budgets before that. The budget that's proposed this year for the POP program and the paid-on-call program together is $65,000 compared to $12,000. So that's more than a 500 percent increase. And the city has other needs. I've got an amendment that I propose to add a fifth full-time dispatch position. I think there's, I believe the chief said this at the last meeting, or maybe it was just in discussions I've had with him, that there's a need to add another police officer. He hasn't made those requests in prior budgets. My understanding is basically he was told by the mayor and the city administrator to not make those requests, and so he hasn't. And if you look at the position counts, you can see police increased, was it, had 19 positions in 2006, it went up to 20 in 2007, and it has remained at 20 since then. Dispatch was at four, and then went up one year, went up to five in 2008, and it went back down to four, and it has stayed there. And I would say that the, these are both also public safety departments, and the needs that have been pointed out, increasing needs, have affected those departments as well. Their police department, their needs are coming from other sources. The, I don't know how, intense urbanization criminal activity that the police department gets involved in, that a lot of suburban departments wouldn't be expected to deal with, because we're a first-string suburb. And obviously, dispatch is the one dispatching both police and fire and EMTs. Oh, I'm sorry, fire is from the county.
They don't dispatch anything to do with fire or EMS.
Right. I misspoke. So dispatch does just dispatch the police, and they're there 24/7 to answer any calls that come into the PE. I can get into more about the dispatch position in a minute, but basically, that's the reason I oppose adding this position, is we've gone from sixth to eighth. This would add a ninth. Chief, fire chief, I should say. Said at the last meeting that he would be looking for an additional position, I don't know if it's a firefighter position or something else, going forward. And as you see tonight, we have, under the mayor's proposed budget, we have $105,000 available under the levy limit that we can spend or not. It's a very, I think it's a pretty frugal budget, and the actual across-the-board wage increases are a quarter percent less than what we've done in recent years, for the most part. So that's a problem I have, is we've been directing, these are pretty expensive positions, directing the resources towards fire and EMT and not to others. We also had gotten a memo today in regard to Alder Kitslar's amendment with regard to the study on paid family leave, indication that the administration side feels that they are understaffed. And I, just from my personal experience with her being there and interacting with them, I would agree that they probably are. And some, I think it would probably make more sense to step back and do an analysis of the needs of fire, EMT, police, dispatch, and admin, and develop a plan of how we would, if we would agree that there are short in needs in staffing in those, all those departments, then develop a plan for how we would address that. The only other thing I would add is that this does, if it were to be approved, that we not, that we delay the hiring authority, I would suggest until July 1, so that it would be six months, which would take up about 40, not quite $42,000 of the 105 that we have available, if that's not acceptable. You know, I think it should at least be delayed part of the year, because if we approve it for 12 months, you know, for one thing, I doubt that it could be filled January 1. Maybe it could. But there's essentially then, what, 20, 20, let's see, $22,000 remaining under the levy limit at that point.
I just want to add a general comment as we're grappling with all of these issues. I don't think there's anyone in this room that would argue that we don't need this position to be filled. But that's not the question that we are forced to answer tonight, because there are other needs, as Alder Wood said, that we also have in this city. And unfortunately, the governor and the legislature, in their infinite wisdom, have decided that we can't decide how much service we need to tax for in our municipality. They've put a cap on that. And so we're forced to ration these needs. And that's the challenge tonight, is what needs are we going to prioritize? And as I sit here, I don't have the answer to that yet, but we are forced to ration. Like, we cannot exceed that 105,000, though we can spend some of our reserves. But we would rarely do that on something that's going to be a recurring expense year after year. We prefer to spend that on things that are one-time expenses. That doesn't mean we can't do it, though, but it just, it binds the hands of those of us who'll be sitting at this table next year.
Anyone else?
Can I make some comments? So the staffing, the addition of the two firefighter paramedics in the past three years, yes, we have added two people. But when we talk about staffing for the fire department, there's a big portion of it that hasn't been addressed right now. It's the staffing of the volunteers or the paid-on-call. Back in the 80s and 90s, we had 40 people on EMS, we had 40 people on fire. We have lost the majority of those, to where now we have 32 people on fire, of which some of them are also EMS-trained. We don't have a person that is specifically and only EMS like we used to have in the 80s, 90s, and early 2000s. So when we look at the fire department and the EMS, we have to look at the whole picture, not just the two, three years that, since 2014. Another portion that we look at with the financing on it, yes, we have added, it's not cheap to provide public safety. But one thing that wasn't brought up was the revenues that are generated by... But one thing that wasn't brought up was the revenues that are generated by the EMS. We went from, in 2010, our revenues were $190,000. Projected for 2018, they're $385,000. We have overdoubled what our revenues have been. Our EMS general tax levy in 2007 was $152,000. In 2016 was $143,000, almost $9,000 less than it was in 2007 on the EMS side. Now granted, on the fire side, the fire side was 316, and it's 526. But like I said, public safety is not inexpensive. But when we talk about how we budgeted, how we manage our budgets, the difference from, even going from 2007, or 2007 to 2017, there's a $5,000 increase over those 10 years. That's including the two positions that we have added.
Say that again?
In 2007, our EMS general tax was $152,000. In 2017, the budgeted number was $157,000.
Right.
The EMS side.
Is that because the new positions, were they?
The positions are split half and half.
Okay.
And the EMS budget, half in the fire budget.
So why is the fire gone up so much more than?
Because we don't have revenues on the fire side. We don't have as large of revenues.
Oh, the levies, okay, not the expenditure, the levy.
The levy, yes.
Okay, thanks.
So, so when we talk about the addition of personnel, we have to look at it as a department as a whole. And yes, looking at just the snapshot from 2014 till now, we've gotten the lion's share of the money, but looking at it over the last 30 years, prior to that, like Alder Wood said, we had $12,000 in our recruitment and retention. Our average volunteer was getting $122 a year for their stipend. In comparison, and we can't really compare, I'm not trying to compare Manona to Fitchburg, I just know Fitchburg's number, their budget for their paid on-premise and paid-on-call is $700,000. Ours is 70. So when we're looking at trying to attract paid-on-call, paid-on-premise personnel, they're paying them $15 an hour. We're paying them, because we're not, we don't do it by the hour, but if you took the $54 and divided it by 24 hours, you're just over $2 an hour, where they're paying their personnel $15 an hour. So we have to look at it as a whole picture of the department as a whole. And the other thing that we've talked about is the response times. Are we comfortable with long response times? And this is both on fire calls and on EMS calls. Are we comfortable if we don't get someone there to provide patient care in the first four, six, eight, 10, 15, whatever that time period may be? By adding this position, we are reducing the possibility that we won't get somebody there as quickly as we possibly can.
Let's ask two quick questions, and I think. Well, what I would hope is, go ahead, maybe I'll remember what they were.
Long enough, you'll forget them? No. So I think it was actually summarized beautifully by both Larry and Mary Ann, when it comes down to bones of the system being able to respond. And this hasn't been an easy discussion, and I've been in this discussion with the fire chief for multiple years, and year after year, I hope he's seen it as productive criticism along the way about how we are trying to make our best effort to look at many different ways of addressing the needs of the department and the needs of the city in response. From that, when we go back and we look at the various ways that we've tried to address the volunteer aspect, because I think, if I go back a few years ago, before the ad hoc committee, we had quite a few discussions at the public safety level around how is it that we can address the volunteer aspect, and the parallel at the time, our intern program. And the initial excitement of the intern program and hoping that would be able to help fill some of our gap, and volunteer recruitment and retention in different ways than we have in the past, used to be easy, that you could, you know, get a few people to go around town and knock on a few doors, and you had 20 new people that wanted to volunteer. That is a time of the past. And so we encouraged the fire chief and the department to look at different ways to solicit volunteers, and we made some changes, including the adjustment with some of the different programs about how is it that we look at our geographic parameters to look at volunteers to be able to widen that net. But as the chief Sullivan points out, like, as you widen that net, you're also now competing with different agencies that not only can compensate differently, they also have different facilities in addition to the compensation. And so we're battling lots of, lots of fronts on the volunteer side, and I commend the staff for continuing to refine those programs, to do the best we can for the muscle side. But the muscle side doesn't help if you get to the structure fire and there's no, there's no truck. It doesn't help if the number of calls that go in for Heritage or some of our other facilities, and if we have no one responding, and then we need to page that out to a different community to respond, the increased response time is not acceptable. For those reasons, I've been cautious for the last few years of adding additional positions, because I fear that the decision in the year that you make it is the easy decision. The tough decision is where that decision goes for the next budget and the budget after that. So before I end, so hopefully Doug has forgotten his questions, and that is to mark, and it has to do with, so if, for example, we funded this position and ate up $84,000 of this year's budget, and if we anticipate all the other items in our budget to be there, our main number changes based on equalized value in a percentage.
The levy?
Mm-hmm.
Which means that equalized value, you're talking about for the future?
For the future.
Equalized value number is new construction, is to levy, is based on?
But will that, in the sense of, so, let's say we max out our 105 this year, and our equalized number goes down?
Yeah.
Hypothetically.
Yes.
So our levy limit would actually decrease on what we're able to?
They don't let you decrease, there's a, I came up with a number, they give you an increased number, like a cost inflation type number, so it don't go zero backwards. Plus, we'll be closing to the future here, so that would become a lot of to, so that's the others. But equalized value goes backwards, your levy doesn't go backwards.
Okay.
And if we're front coming, I mean, the odds are that if we're front coming to, that number's going to be increasing equalized value, so maybe, you know, five or six years in a row, it could go level off, but for now, it's not, it's not.
Alder Wood, have you remembered?
I did. I'm gonna ask one of them and not ask the other one, but just to follow up on Alder Wood's point, though, I think last year we only had 0.75 of 1% that we could raise the levy. So the levy gap does, this is a relatively good year, so last year was about its type, the one that I can. So the question I had, chief, was, two-part, I guess, adding the two full-time positions, has that helped to increase the revenue? I know we made some changes a few years ago in the way that we build, and that resulted in a lot of the increased revenue.
No, the added positions are positions to staff the engine. So we have, if we were to add this position, we would have three people on each shift, we'd have three shifts.
Right.
Two are mandatory, be on the ambulance. One is on the engine. If someone takes vacation, sick leave, we don't backfill that position on the engine. That's, so it has reduced overtime, and we've cut back on our overtime budgets, but no, it has not increased the revenue. We have continued to increase revenue just from the billing as we, as we get better itemizing billing.
Yeah.
It increases, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Alder Moore?
Yeah, well, I just, I'm reminded that the first vice president that I served under as a young administrator said to me that I shouldn't, you know, shy away from making a request, as long as I wasn't shy about arguing for it, making case for it, you know, the old, if you don't ask for it, you don't get it. And it occurs to me that as we're grappling with these tough budget issues, that in fact, you know, our police chief has not been able to speak to the dispatcher issue as of yet, and I fully respect the fact that he didn't bring a request to us, because he understands how much our hands are tied. But at the risk of having the chiefs duke it out in front of us, you know, I certainly would like to hear from the police chief and where the dispatch position that Alder Wood is proposing sits with him and before we, you know, before we have to make any decisions.
Yep, and we will do that. Anyone else have any comments or questions on the firefighter paramedic? Okay, we will come back to that for the vote then. Amendment 18-04, to hire a highly qualified consultant to conduct a communications needs assessment with prioritized recommendations for the future that would not only address gaps, but enable us to be far more proactive, effective, and efficient in communications. This is for $18,000, put forth by Alders Moore and Coer.
I would just say, there's a couple of things related to this amendment. First, at the last meeting, we talked about the possibility of this coming out of the fund balance rather than the levy, and I'm perfectly comfortable with that. And the second is that I have, since the last time we spoke about it, I've been able to speak to communications consultants to get a finer figure on what this would take, and I'm comfortable with a $12,000 figure rather than the $18,000 for immediate disjunction.
Is, would someone like to make a motion to make that change and take it out of fund balance? We can vote on it now, or if we're not going to take it out of fund balance, we'll just discuss it and vote on it later?
I'd be happy to make a motion.
Andy would move? Second?
Is that also to reduce it to $12,000?
Yeah. And to put it, take it out of fund balance?
Yeah, and let me just say, you know, at the risk of dating myself as it relates to this motion, you know, back in the day, when one used to talk about communications, you know, you hired a PR firm, you made a brochure, and maybe you purchased a little bit of advertising. And now we're talking about a myriad of platforms, all moving at lightning speed, and so we've got radio, TV, you know, four to six social media channels, newspapers, websites, advertising, direct mail, apps, and even fake news, you know? And, you know, and honestly, the likelihood of us needing to have disaster response on top of that, because things, you know, and be prepared for that, because things do move at lightning speed, I just think that, again, that getting more of a handle on what our needs are and starting to lay down some really serious bricks around what our priorities are to up our communications game is really important.
First of all, did we have a second amendment?
Yes, it was Alder Kitzler and Alder Moore.
Okay, all right. Yes, Alder Kitzler?
I'd like to add, so I'm on the tourism commission, and I think this would be a good parallel to some of the items that we've been discussing there, as far as helping our communications and trying to attract the other decisions. So I think this is coming at a good time, where the tourism commission is starting to come on board, and then hopefully we can partner with the department and kind of discuss those.
Anyone else? Alder Coer?
I'd just like to say that one of the reasons we brought this forward also was the fact that in talking with a lot of department heads, they're doing things in terms of communications that may be outside their normal duties, and we'd like them to be able to devote their skills and resources to what they were hired to do. So if there are ways to shift those responsibilities to, you know, other people who are better skilled than we currently have, or down the road, we talk about hiring or getting a consultant to come in and do some more robust communications, I think that's a more efficient use of funds than what we're currently doing. So I think that that's an important point to think about as we're looking to spend more money, that I think this could actually help save us some money in the long run.
Anyone else?
And I think our staff right now does an exceptionally good job with the tools that we have, but I feel like we're kind of at our limit, we're pretty tapped out, taking on anything like tourism, going to the next level of social media, public engagement, you know, I think we're kind of right at that limit where we have to really sit down and review, where do we go from here? And I'm hoping that's kind of where we go with this effort.
Anyone else? Alder Coer?
I'd just like to point out, I saw online a couple days ago that the village of Wanakee hired someone to record a song about them and posted it on YouTube. So there's a whole level of marketing and communications that we haven't even considered, so.
That Wanakee's always gonna show us.
Yeah.
We have radio jingles.
We have our own radio jingles.
We guys jingle girls.
We also have a logo we never used from a past marketing campaign.
All right, anything? Okay, all in favor of approving an expenditure of $12,000 for a communication consultant from the fund balance, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion passes. All right, on to item five, to add, 18-05, to add $20,000 from fund balance for a cost study to provide city employees paid family leave for birth, adoption, et cetera, of a child in paid family care, personal or family serious illness. This would be, come from the fund balance, and it's sponsored by Alder Kitzler. And I think this is something we could vote on now too, since it's coming from fund balance, so is there a motion to approve?
I move approval.
True, true. Second?
Second, okay. Alder Kitzler, would you like to?
Yeah, so I know council members received a memo from April regarding some of the staff concerns. I certainly acknowledge those. I want to reiterate kind of two things. One, you know, it's not, not to belittle it, but it is coming from fund balance, is one issue. And then the second one is, but this is a study to see what the feasibility is and not an implementation. So I'm looking back to the next year. and not an implementation. So I'm looking back to the next year, you know, I'm able to work with this consultant, or as I mentioned in our last meeting, there's a consortium called Council on Wisconsin Strategy through the UW-Madison, who are connected through the university project. That would be a lot of stuff to look at implementing this and all the aspects that go along with it. And that aspect do include some of the concerns of, you know, fixed vacation and paid leave time, staffing issues, you know, current FMLA and different, you know, aspects like that. So it really looks at policy and cost. And again, so it's not something that we're implementing in the next year, but we're really looking at studying it and getting into all the issues. So I or the consultant or anyone else who's interested can talk to all those that are concerned on the staff. And then, you know, just to get on my soapbox a little bit, you know, this is a, one is thinking benefits, and I know based salary has a huge say in when people take positions or result attraction and not. But I also know from, you know, when I worked for a job or where I worked, you know, benefits package is a huge attraction. And I don't want individuals taking vacation time, taking their paid leave time, to spend time with their family, whether it's for, you know, injury, personal or family, or parental leave. And, you know, there's many definitions within that, there's many policies within that, and that's something that I'm hoping in the next year, you know, we really can look at. So I certainly don't want to minimize people's concerns with it, but I also want to reiterate that this next year, you know, the funds that would be coming from the fund balance, which I actually hope would be less than $20,000 or potentially nothing if, you know, my communication with the COWS, Council on Wisconsin Strategy Group is followed through with, we might not be able, we might not have to spend anything. But the next year, we would really look at what are all the problems, what are some of the solutions, and then is it feasible to implement in Manona?
There any questions? Alder Spade, then Alder Holmquist?
I just want to add that I would agree with Alder Kitzler in reiterating that this is a study to figure out what is possible for the city. And then I would also add that, I mean, we are the change that we seek in this world. Like, if we don't do things that we think should be done, then they aren't going to happen. And so if you want to live in a world where, you know, it's hard to spend time with a loved one when they're sick, or when a child is born, or whatever the case may be, well, we have that world. And I would like to live in a world where it's a little bit easier. All of these benefits cost some money. But if we don't figure out how to provide them, then they won't exist. So I wholeheartedly support trying to figure out how we can do this as a city. I'm sure it'll be baby steps, because that's probably all we'll be able to afford. But better to take those baby steps than to never even think about it.
Alder Holmquist?
Although I support the concept, I would like us to explore COWs before we dedicate any additional funds at this time, so...
Yeah, Alder Moore?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I would support what Alder and Holmquist was talking about. I, you know, and you're gonna hear this, you'll probably hear more about this later from me, but, you know, every study that's been done under the sun as it relates to HR and benefits would tell you that compensation and benefits is not a driver as it relates to retention. It is a driver as it relates to attraction, but it is definitely not a driver as it relates to retention. It's like at the bottom. There are much, there are other factors that are much more important, and it just seems to me, I mean, I'm all in favor of doing whatever we can to support our staff because, you know, our staff is our greatest asset. It always is. Your staff is always your greatest asset. But I think, you know, and I'm all for looking at what benefits overall we can do, how we can juice up our benefits package, if you will, but I, you know, I'd like to think that we, there's some ways that we can do that that I guess would support everybody on the staff, kind of in an equitable fashion rather than by disaster or by, or by birth. And I think that with small staffs in particular, family leave has the potential of certainly helping a few people that need it, when they need it, but while simultaneously really burdening, seriously burdening the people that remain, because obviously if you have that kind of a policy, you have to hold a position open, and that means other people are double, doing double or triple duty, or you're hiring a temp who's fumbling around for months. And so I guess I would say, you know, there might be other benefits, you know, health savings accounts, or long-term and short-term disability insurance, or other things that might, might make more sense as we look at benefits, our benefits package overall. But I'm concerned about spending these kind of dollars if in fact we don't think out of the gate that it's something that we're really seriously, you know, specific to this particular narrow, if you will, focus of a family leave. If it's not something that we really think we're gonna wrap our hands around a year from now, I would say, you know, we should be looking at maybe broadening the study or trying to, as Alder Holmquist said, you know, trying to do an analysis that's either broader in terms of the overall benefits picture, or try to work on a pro bono basis with something like COWs.
Alder Coer?
Actually, I have a question for Mark. So if we, if we use fund balance for this, we can do that at any point. We don't necessarily have to tap into fund balance as part of the 2018 budget.
Right.
I mean, three months down the road, if we just explore this COWs option and that's not a viable option, we could...
Right, you can use the fund balance.
At that point.
Alder Wood?
Yeah, I think Alder Moore certainly raised some valid questions. I guess, to me, that's part of the purpose, though, of this, carrying this, during the study, would be to get the answers to some of those things of what would the expected impact on staff, existing staff, and workload demands if somebody is out. But I think, so, I guess I would, I would rather, and I guess one question I would have then is, so if we don't pass the amendment, whose job is it to, who's going to follow up with COWs, and who's going to do that research and that legwork to find the answer? And here's my concern. We got a memo this morning from the city administrator, the day we're gonna vote on the budget, pretty much flat out opposing this amendment, which was extraordinary, if not completely unprecedented, in my experience, that we would get a fairly detailed memo from staff opposing an amendment proposed by an Alder, because it's, you know, our job is just that policy, and it's the administration's job to administer the policy. So that would, I guess, gives me pause, since the staff clearly, some of the staff and the ones probably be involved in it, are indicated an unfavorable view of this. Are we going to then say, well, you guys go, you're the ones who need to go look into COWs and do this work to see if we can do the study that they don't think's a good idea in the first place? So I would rather, let's go ahead with this, and if we can, if Alder Kitzler can look into it and find if there are cheaper ways to do it, that's fine. But I think it's worth pursuing. I agree that we shouldn't do this, as with, like with the last amendment, we shouldn't adopt it if we don't think there's a pretty good likelihood that we'll take some action based on what we find out. I'd just like to respond, there was one statement in that memo that stated, there's a reason, I guess, for that this isn't needed, is that no employee who has taken FMLA leave in the past has taken an unpaid. Well, that's exactly the point, is that people don't take unpaid FMLA because they can't afford to. And they have to use up their sick leave and vacation leave for these major life events that granted are only gonna affect a few employees at any given time period, but over a long period will, has a good chance of affecting all employees, whether it's a birth, a death, taking care of parents, et cetera. So... And I, you know, I am certainly sympathetic to the notion that we're already running thin staff-wise. And so I think, and I said this to Alder Kitzler, I think that this, if this comes back recommending some sort of, you know, additional paid family leave, that we may very well need to look at increasing staffing at the same time, which again is gonna make it more difficult to implement. But if we, so at least that would be a choice we'd have to make, that, okay, this is, if it's something we want to do, but we don't have the staff to do it, do we want to then say, okay, we're gonna add the staff, or is it like, well, we can't, or we don't? It's not worth adding staff to have this policy. But I think until we get the study, I don't think we know the answers to a lot of those things, and hopefully that's what it will do.
City Administrator Little?
I felt like I took a little bit of a chance, a risk of offending anybody by putting this in, which is certainly not my intent. It's just, because we don't get a vote, whatever you vote, obviously, we're professionals, we will implement whatever policy you choose. And we are always glad to, that, to see that improvements in the benefits are considered. We just wanted to raise the other point that when there are employees out on leave, there is a big impact on the employees who are not on leave. And I wanted to just make sure that that was, you know, very seriously considered as well. I mean, I love the notion that people can take as much time as they wish to, but there is an impact on our organization, not the least of which is possibly dramatic overtime increases and a burden on the already thin staff. So, you know, maybe we'll find some good solutions, and we can implement those and protect the employees that are on leave as well as those who are left behind to work. I think that's the ideal option. I'm sure there's a way to do it. I just didn't want that to be left out of the discussion.
Alder Moore?
Yeah, Alder Kitzler, I'm wondering if, to go back to a point I was making a minute ago, I'm wondering, I mean, because I don't know that any one of us here is sitting, thinking that we shouldn't try to be more generous with the staff as it relates to benefits, if we can, and forward-thinking. So I certainly get where you're coming from. I'm wondering if there's a possible amendment to your proposal, which is to, as I mentioned a minute ago, to broaden whatever study we do to include more than just family leave, that we look at, like I said, we look, you know, the types of benefits that are being offered across the board now by a lot of different agencies and nonprofits and for-profits, you know, everything from game tables to, you know, to all kinds of things. You know, in all seriousness, the benefits these days are changing a lot, and I'm wondering if it doesn't make sense to look at it more broadly rather than just looking at the family leave and seeing if there is a way for us to comfortably, you know, you know, put together some things that would be more attractive and that we would feel better about as a council and as a city being able to offer our staff, and that the staff would feel good about as well.
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to broaden it. I mean, I don't know if the, you know, the $20,000 estimate was something that Mark would be able to get from some of the individuals that he talked to, and that Brian asked if Mark would be able to look into it with Fidnick. I don't know if Mark's been able to do that. But, you know, I'm happy to look at all benefits. I mean, my, my passion and my piece is looking at the paid family leave and paid family care, which, you know, the COWs thing, what they would look at. So I don't know, we would have to do a little bit more research on what are the avenues and who would look into it.
Mark?
I did follow up with something. They do not do this, and they don't, we, our civic is probably one of the communities, about 15 to 20 at least, communities involved in that cities, and none of their other cities and communities do that right now. So they don't, I mean, they're actually interested in hearing what we come up with and what we hear from other people. But they were gonna look around and see what the other communities were doing and do some research too, just kind of follow up and nothing in depth at all. I, what I did is I talked to some accounting firms who kind of do the number crunches and other things like that, and that's where I kind of got the number for the $20,000. And they were, this is a newer, newer thing. There's larger communities. We see all some other bigger cities that are doing that, I think they have COWs. So the number's probably fluctuating. It's just, I guess, you know, it could be as low as $10,000, it could be even a little bit more. So I just told Andrew that $20,000 is probably a good decent number. So I didn't really have much support one way or another just for communications. Most of the counties do stuff like that because they deal with that stuff, not the end of the basis, but they consult and that kind of stuff.
Alder Kitzler?
The other thing I wanted to add, subject.
No, go ahead.
The other thing I wanted to add is, I know I sent all the council members a number of links, and one of those links has a document of, you know, Doug's been compiling dozens of municipalities that have already implemented such a thing. So feel free, and, you know, if I have to share it other ways, please let me know. I also wanted to make a few other comments, along with, you know, thanks Leah and Mark for all their help in compiling a lot of information. I think we've done a lot of legwork already, especially as it comes to cost analysis. But I'm happy to, I know Doug mentioned who would follow up. I'm happy to work on this. I'm happy to do some follow-up and legwork as far as COWs. You know, to me, this is something I'm taking serious for the next year, and it will be something I would propose and hope, you know, for the next year. I do want to do this to move forward. And, you know, a couple of reasons why I think we should build on this is to show, you know, the council has buy-in. But really, you know, again, getting back on my soapbox is, I do believe a budget is a portrayal of your values and the direction you're going in. You know, the work-life balance is something that is huge to me, and so I want to make sure that we do have buy-in, not only, you know, the follow-up that Doug was mentioning as well, as far as staff, so, you know, everybody's concerns are being heard, and that's what this next year, you know, hopefully we'll look at.
Alder Spade?
I just wanted to add that, I mean, I read Administrator Little's email this morning, and I, I mean, I thought it was helpful, actually. I don't, I want to push back a little bit from what Alder Wood said. I mean, I get it, like, it's part of this conversation, and it's helpful to me to know where city staff are coming from. But that said, you know, reading the letter, it was helpful to think about the fact that, yes, you're being flexible right now. You are allowing things to, you know, people to maybe bend the rules a little bit. And I'm a small business owner. I do that too. Like, I've had a couple of staff that have had children in the last year. We've had kind of an unofficial family leave policy. It's not written down. It's not clear. And I've been thinking about this a lot for my own business, because my concern is, how can I make sure that I'm fair to everyone on my staff when I'm improvising with a policy? And so that's why I think having a policy as a city or as a small business is good and ultimately more fair. And, you know, I understand what's being said about how it puts a burden on the staff. I mean, believe me, I know what it, my key person left... I mean, believe me, I know what it, my key person left for a month, and that was really challenging. But that said, I mean, it's a burden every time someone goes on vacation. And would we suggest that people shouldn't go unpaid vacation? And, of course, we wouldn't. But, I mean, whenever something like this gets started, we're all aware of how, oh, it's a burden. Yes, it is a burden, but we need, that's, we want to figure out how to fairly share the burden so that we have a workplace that treats everyone equally, and people understand what it is that they're, what comes with their employment and what doesn't. And so I really strongly support us doing something to help move this city to where we have a clearer policy that's fair to those that are left behind at the desk as well as those that get to take advantage of.
Anyone else? Alder Homquist?
I have a concern with just how narrow this is, and if we, if we've had any concerns regarding our total compensation package or to look at other aspects of compensation, I would expect that to be driven from the mayor and the administrator and the department heads as a problem that has evolved and become aware, rather than from us from a, a policy decision down, when there are other aspects that address, address these pieces. I just, I see it out of, the timing out of order. If we have a concern and we want to look at our compensation package to evaluate those pieces of it, I say that we do that. We do that internally with our staff, where are we at? And if there are issues that we need to address, then we go out and we, we figure out how it is that we're going to address that. I can't support it at this time.
Yeah, I guess I would just, I mean, you know, game tables joking aside, my point was, there are, you know, and I mentioned a couple, health savings accounts, disability insurance, another one that, you know, you see more and more is, and again, this speaks to the whole life balance, you know, life-work balance issue of, of, you know, being, companies being a lot more attentive to flex time, especially in the, with the millennials and younger individuals. Work schedules at home versus in the office. I mean, there's, you know, a lot of companies now are purchasing, you know, health club memberships for their employees and developing incentive programs so that, you know, because if, healthy, healthy employees obviously keep health costs down, so it actually ends up being a win-win. So, I just think that there's, the overall package is something that's worth looking at, rather than just keeping it narrow to family, because, you know, it's kind of, in my mind, it's kind of analogous to us saying, you know, we're all going to go out and, you know, buy landlines for the whole staff, isn't this great so we can feel good about it? And then, you know, the staff coming back and saying, but we don't use landlines anymore, like, that doesn't do us any good, you know? So, I'd rather, if we're going to look at, you know, improving our benefits, and I certainly am totally game for that, I just want to make sure we're doing it in a smart way and right way, in a way that is in fact an attractive thing and a workable thing for the city.
Anyone else? Alder Wood?
So, Alder Kitzler, would you be agreeable to amending this, the description of it to just add a wording at the end? Right now it says to add $20,000 from fund balance for a cost study to provide city employees paid family leave and paid family care. And then to add to that and to review, what, a wide, I don't know how you're phrasing, you had some phrasing, Alder Moore, the full range of fringe benefits?
Benefits package, yeah, fringe benefits and benefits package.
Currently offered by the city.
Currently offered by the city.
Well, and, okay. So, I'm not sure who moved and seconded it.
That would be Alder Speen and Alder Kitzler.
So, I think if they're both okay with, that could just be a friendly amendment to it, to widen it, as long as everybody understands what we're talking about.
I would accept that.
Alder Kitzler?
Yep.
You'll accept that.
Can I get the wording again, I'm sorry?
Uh, that we commit $20,000 to doing a study of the employee compensation and benefits package, packages, offerings, to see how we might enrich, or might need to enrich or want to enrich that package to serve our staff and...
I think you could just add and to review full benefits package at the end of the sentence.
Okay.
Okay, wait.
Joan can only write so fast.
And to, I'm sorry, say that again, and to review full benefits package?
Current employee benefits packages, I think.
Current employee benefits.
Got it.
Do you want to repeat that back to us, Joan, so they make sure we're all?
Are you sure?
See if you got it right.
At the end it would say and paid, and paid family leave, personal or family serious illness, and to review full current employee benefits package.
Yep.
Yes? All right.
Is that all right with everyone?
Yes.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
I'm sorry, was there two nays? Thank you.
All right, motion passes. Next up is Amendment 18-06, to add a new dispatcher in the amount of $67,031. This is sponsored by Alder Wood. Is there, or well, this is another one we'll discuss and vote on later. Alder Wood?
Yeah, so this would add a fifth full-time dispatcher. We currently have four. The annual 12-month cost would be $67,031. We used to have five, and then we have gone down to four. I think we may have increased the spending for, for part-time dispatchers, I'm not sure. But, and Lieutenant Duman and Chief Estringit can speak to this probably more intelligently than I can, but basically, having four, having five compared to four just makes the scheduling a lot easier. It's, they have kind of a complicated schedule, and in particular, when somebody is on leave or when there's a vacancy, as there was this summer, they were operating on, with three full-time dispatchers, overtime, and then we had Lieutenant Duman and two sworn officers filling in, and the overtime cost for the two officers was, I added that, well, about $8,500. But they had 193 hours of straight time, 161 hours of overtime for the two officers, and Lieutenant Duman worked 300 hours in dispatch. So, we had 350, about 650 hours, I think, of other staff working in dispatch. You have much, much higher rates of pay. Dispatchers make, their, their overtime rate is about $32, $32.50 an hour to $34, compared to $51 to $57 an hour for the sworn officers filling in. Lieutenant Duman doesn't get overtime, but she's obviously being taken away from her other duties, so having this dispatcher would...
$3,500, I assume, if that comes into consideration.
Correct, yeah, that's just a wrong, yeah.
Okay, Chief Estrenga?
Well, I'd like to thank Alder Wood for making this budget amendment. As he indicated before, through the years, we've been kind of beaten down not to ask for more, because it would take away, we're limited in our resources and our, in our, in our funds, and it would probably detract from other departments in the city. In 2013, going into 2014 budget, we, at the urging of the mayor, Mayor Miller, we had an independent study done by the University of North Texas, and that was, we were basically arguing to keep our 20th officer, which was our community relations officer. You have to be careful, what you're with, wish for with studies, is that what came out of that study is not only did we need that officer, we needed six more police officers, another detective, another sergeant, another dispatcher, just to keep up with what we're doing now. It was recommended then that we have, I believe the number was 4.63 or some number like that, full-time dispatchers just to staff what we're doing now. And what comes out of that study, as, you know, we've had in some of our conversations in the last year, is that we're real good at handling emergency calls. When some emergency happens, we fly out the door, we go do it, but we just don't have the time to devote to chronic problems, that it takes time where somebody, you have to have time on patrol when you're not doing anything, you can just drive to the neighborhoods. And that's where we really fall down, because we just don't have the personnel to do that. So, it's not, it's not that, you know, the crime is, is getting less, it's getting more, and we're getting more and more taxed, and I, and I mentioned when we made our presentation for the operational budget, that next year I would be asking for another police officer. Lieutenant Duman today was working dispatch on day shift. She's here tonight, Thanksgiving, she's working dispatch on day shift, because we just don't have people to fill those spots. That's another reason why we do need another full-time dispatcher. So, I'll let Sarah go into some of the...
Details.
Details of this.
So, as you clearly know, we do have four full-time dispatch staff. When you're trying to staff a 24-hour operation, we fall short, and basically, with the rotations that we have annually, we fall short, and we don't have anybody scheduled 122 days of the year. So, that's a full third of the year that we have day shift opening, weekends, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, or Saturday, Sunday. We have in the past been very blessed with some part-timers that have made it their mission to continue Manona's dispatch center. I don't know how many of you knew Bob, but he was, Bob was interesting, but he was, he was always there for us. So, that did help out a lot, but Bob did retire, and so we're finding increasingly that we're having difficulty filling those shifts on the weekends. While we do have part-timers on staff, they're not always available. And for some reason, it kind of seems like everybody has one weekend that they're all doing something, and, and that just happens. So, we end up paying overtime, or I end up covering. This year, of course, has been an exception with one full-timer gone. So, yes, I've been covering a lot more than normal. I've never kept track in the past of how many shifts I've covered, but the goal always kind of was to keep our costs down, to avoid having a lot of overtime. And whenever we couldn't have a, a part-time recover, if I was already working, a lot of times I would sit at the desk and, and cover dispatch. But yes, then, some of my other duties do fall behind a little bit, and I end up having to play catch-up on those. So, looking at our overtime hours over the years, they, and I can't necessarily explain this from 2016, but we had 510 hours of overtime just in 2016. I think likely that resulted from, we've got two dispatchers who are at the top vacation rate, actually, I shouldn't say top vacation rate, one at the top vacation rate, one who works third shift who likes her time off, but she also knows when she takes time off, somebody else has to come in at 3:00 in the morning, and she had a little bit of a conscience and wasn't using her vacation. So, last year there was a real push of, you have to use this, you can't carry it over. You're going to lose it if you don't. So, I think that was part of the reason for last year's increase, but she's now maxed out.
You're two people, so about 16?
Uh, no, that was 15.
Mercy?
Um, in 2015, we had two full-timers leave, that was Melissa and Jennifer, and in 2015, they were replaced by Marge and Katie. So, that doesn't explain the 2016 overtime, unfortunately. So, so I don't know what the trend is, that we're, you know, whether it's, that we're just increasingly having, you know, as people get more benefit time, they're obviously wanting to use their time and take that time off. So, you know, at this point, I guess that's why we're here, asking that you consider the, the fifth full-time position for the dispatch.
Alder Speen?
Just want to ask the question, I mean, it seems that you and everyone on the staff will be able to better do the things which you're primarily paid to do if we have this fifth person on dispatch. That, that is accurate, correct?
Yes, yeah. I mean, I saw open records requests, and while I can do some of it while I'm dispatching, there's a lot of things that I can't pay attention to the details that I need to when I'm also juggling phones and radio traffic and window traffic.
Is it a logical request for the police department and public safety to, I mean, knowing that an officer will probably be requested next year, which is different, of course, from a dispatcher? Is it, is this a logical ask, given that it didn't come directly from you, but it, it came from Alder Wood?
Yeah, I would say so. I mean, what Alder Wood and Mary O'Connor have is sort of a little advantage, is they were sort of part of our dispatch study, the last one that went by, this last year, about a year ago is when we did that. So, they sort of got a firsthand view of what the duties are as far as filling those, those seats in the chair. And it's, it's not like it used to be. It used to be, you just answer the phone, you punch a card, you talk on the radio. Now, it's much more complex. Just a new, a part-time dispatcher, it takes a minimal two weeks, two weeks, just to get them up to speed, how to enter the calls in the CAD and do other things. And they're not just dispatchers, they're, they, they answer the phone, they answer questions at the front window, they type reports, they process citations. It's, it's much more than what it used to be like 20 years ago, and we had, you know, this was, Manona was known as sort of the entry level into law enforcement. You talk to deputies, firefighters that, that started, they cut their teeth in law enforcement dispatching for Manona, because they, we always had to have them on holidays, we had to have them on weekends, and there were people actually, you know, looking forward to that position. Now, it's just kind of like volunteers. Doesn't pay enough money to come in on a Thanksgiving, it doesn't, it's not what it used to be. It's just changed.
Any other questions? Alder Moore?
So, I guess I'm, maybe I'm asking the same question a different way, but from what I understand, we're looking at, you know, $46,000 and change in overtime, actual paid-out overtime, from what the sheet said, right?
Well, the sheet is actually, I would say, costs associated with covering it, because my hourly rate is included in that, and I don't get overtime, I just have to take time off somewhere else, or if I'm, if I'm not on my normal rate.
Okay, I thought that was actually the cash out the door, I didn't think included salary.
Nope, that's not, that's not cash out the door. So, we have...
So, to the extent that you are paying some actual cash out the door in overtime?
What I came up with was that we were, the three officers, so I'm including her 300 hours in it, because she could be doing something else, but including all those hours was $28,892 with an average payroll of about $44 an hour. Obviously, if you have to use a sworn officer, the overtime rate's a lot higher.
Right, no, I was just trying to get to the actual cash out the door. My point, my question being, I would imagine that there are some people, if they're actually getting, if they actually are getting paid overtime, they might like the extra cash. I know when I had some non-execute employees that had the opportunity for overtime, not all the time, I'm not saying you're going to cover a whole shift on it, but do you think there are some employees... there are some employees that, who you are paying actual overtime dollars to, that are going to miss the opportunity to do that?
Um, overall,
Yeah.
I would say some will miss and some will not.
Okay.
I mean, I've got some that would say, if I didn't have to work any, I'd be fine. The reality is, there probably still would be some because you can't plan poor sick outs or,
Right.
You know, something like that. So there might be a minimal amount of overtime still available.
Okay.
If somebody takes a whole week of vacation, they're still, could potentially not overlap properly, that there might be some shifts. So there would be the possibility that there would be some, but it would be a lot less.
Okay.
I know for a fact that the amount of overtime that they have worked this year, most are full, they would rather not have worked this much overtime.
Okay.
Years past, they probably had somewhere around the range of 60 hours apiece. And that was in that spreadsheet. I don't know if all those prior years were shared. That was tolerable to them.
Okay.
But anything more than that, I know
Okay.
I tend not to like.
Okay. And then just to go back to Alder Spade's question, you know, notwithstanding budget restraints, you just listed off about 12 new positions that you could, that the study indicated you could have. This would be your number-one priority, or is this only the priority because we think we might be able to squeeze it in the budget somehow, or it happens to be, you know, a passion of Alder Wood's, or, I mean, would this be your number-one? If, you know, of all the positions you just listed that you could take on?
It would be mine.
With some of the things that Sarah has to do on a daily basis that she doesn't have time to do,
Right.
It's, it would be, it would be great if she didn't have to sit there and dispatch too. You know, we have body cameras, we have video, and every, every crime that we arrest somebody for now, if you don't have video, it's like people don't believe it happened.
Mm-hmm.
Well, the video doesn't just pop out there automatically. She has to search for it, she has to burn it to CDs, there's all kinds of open record requests. There's going to be an article coming out on body-worn cameras. I was interviewed for it like a week ago, and the reporter said, well, do you get a lot of requests from, you know, just, you know, regular citizens wanting to see body cameras? No, we don't really get them now, but once you write this article, everything's requests for every video we've ever had. And that all takes time. It all takes time. And I try to make scrambled eggs out of this all, but we had, last year, we had two officers injured that were on life duty. You know, with the SOTU proposal, with family leave, they wouldn't be there. They filled in and they actually kept our overtime costs down lower. So it, that's kind of a way to get people to come back to work, get paid, and still be part of the team and accomplish, accomplish our mission.
Okay. Thank you. Alder Moore, question?
Mark, from our discussion on finance and personnel, there was a question regarding the officers that worked overtime, if they, if their overtime pay was pushed to the right account line?
Yeah, we actually have
And so part of that had to do with making sure that we're capturing the overtime in the right budget, even if people work across departments, to be able to look at what would we potentially be saving. So I make the parallel to a lot of the arguments made overtime when it comes to our firefighter paramedic discussion. We had quite a bit of discussion regarding how keeping down the overtime costs or the potential of how shifts get filled and those pieces of it add up to some of the savings to help offset the ongoing cost of the employee. I think that same argument has some legitimate kind of piece of this discussion. I'm cautious with the support of this one, although I understand the rationale and I understand the study and there's likely some information I don't have. And that's, that's my concern in supporting the amendment at this part, rather than having that discussion come through public safety from a committee level, although I fully would expect that committee to support the addition of a fifth dispatcher. I think they would also support the other 11, 12 in that report. But I think it allows that opportunity to figure out where, how this would have an impact on the other components, and how much are we talking about a savings in certain areas and a coverage much like we did for fire and paramedic over the last few years.
Anyone else? Alder Kura?
I'm just curious. I know we had some trouble filling the last dispatcher that was hired. It took quite a bit of time to get them onboard and then another long period of time to get them up and trained. Would you be, or would we be opposed to deferring this to like a July 1 start to save some funds in the 2018?
You're asking me or them?
Asking you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I, yeah, I would. I mean, I think that would, that would cut it to 30, whatever.
You would not be opposed.
I would not be opposed, no, I'm sorry. Negative. Double negatives or something.
Alder Spade?
Yeah, I would add, without going through the hoops we'll be jumping through to try to figure out what we can have and what we can't have here, I would support the notion of both of these emergency positions getting filled mid-year, which then allows them to fit within the budget. And that's what I intend to ask for as we debate this. So because, you know, I'm, I'm not looking to not add a firefighter on account of a dispatcher, but I'm also not looking to only add one of these positions when I feel like those needs are great across our public safety, you know, departments. And so if we're going to tie our hands with one, I want to tie our hands with both, knowing that we're going to move forward and figure out how to share all of these burdens. So that's what, I think it's a great idea.
I guess I wouldn't necessarily be comfortable deferring the firefighter position to July 1. I'd prefer to entertain a partially your position with this one while keeping the full-time firefighter, but that's how I feel.
Anyone else? All right. We'll come back to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Amendment 7. Amendments 7, 8, and 9 are all put forth by Alder Wood and they're, they're kind of similar. So I guess we'll just take them one at a time. Amendment 18-07 would provide a minimum 50 cent per hour raise for employees earning $15 an hour or less. And this would, see, the total amendment will come to, I was trying to figure.
$7,324.
Okay. Alder Wood, do you want to explain each of these one at a time here?
Well, I mean, the basic idea behind all three of them is that when we, as we traditionally have done, give across-the-board percentage increases to employees, that obviously the people at the lower end, say, for example, somebody this year making $10 an hour, and with a 1.75% raise, would get 17 and 1/2 cents an hour, and if somebody making $30 an hour would make 51 or some cents an hour in their increase. And if we keep doing it, just on that percentage across-the-board basis, the gap between the lowest-paid and the highest-paid employee continues to grow. And so this, all three of these are basically ways of trying to make sure that the lower-paid employees are getting at least a minimum raise of 50 cents an hour, or the second amendment is a dollar an hour, just for the employees under $15 an hour. That one would be $28,000, or no, $19,830. And then the third one was to do 50 cents for the, between 15 and 20 an hour, and that's 3,208, so.
This would include the 1.75?
Right. This is basically taking, you take the 1.75 and then whatever, whatever you need, whatever raise that we need to get to get up to 50 cents an hour would be added. So it's not, it's not on top of the 1.75. It's 50 cents an hour, including the 1.75. Does that make sense?
So nothing less than 50 cents?
Right.
Any questions? Alder Kura?
I'm curious why you included seasonal in these figures?
Yeah, we actually did something similar to this a few years ago, and we did limit it then to permanent, permanent part-time and full-time. I know that the, for one thing, the seasonal employees tend to be, some of them are, some of the lower-paid, lowest-paid. But also, I know that there were some struggles last year, I think at the pool in getting lifeguards, because, you know, we're paying a couple bucks an hour less than Madison and less, you know, frankly, than other private market jobs that they could get. So I think it's, with some of these entry-level positions, it's to be competitive in the marketplace.
Anyone else?
Well, I guess I, yeah, I, I just have a question as it relates to how many, I mean, I don't know what the baseline pay is for every single position in the city, so, you know, I'd like to know how many employees we're talking about this impacting and what the, I mean, I'm assuming that we're not starting at minimum wage when you're talking about adding 50 cents, so can you give us a sense of what that is?
Leah, do you have something you could remark? I mean, I know that, you know, it's, for employees earning $15 an hour or less, it's only to do 50 cents is $7,300.
I know how much, I know how much money is involved. I want to know how many people are involved. Are we talking about 10 people that are getting paid $15 an hour? Were you talking about?
For parks, or for, for, for the library, is this $15 or less? 12? Yeah, 12. There's 12 for the library. The media, which would need people here, that would be, which is, except for, you know, the staff. Six for the media. There's a crossing guard, so there's one that's code enforcement, which is a number one. Then there's the seasonal, which is, there's a lot of seasonals, I mean, there's, but that's for the non-seasonals, that would be, I don't know. So 20 non-seasonals. And then the seasonal's, maybe I'll have a better idea. That's over 15.
Okay. So, so I guess, you know, again, I want to state that I'm supportive, as I can be, as it relates to, you know, increases in the minimum hourly wage in this country and paying adults their living hourly wage, and maintaining, you know, boosting salary positions to be competitive in the marketplace. But I'm going to go back to something I said earlier, which is that compensation is not a retention driver. So I know one of the comments, or one of the points made in requesting this was the idea of retaining people because of this 50 cents, or for that matter, the next, you know, amendment, a dollar increase. And it is, you know, it can be impactful as it relates to attracting, but it's definitely not a driver when it comes to keeping employees.
And is that true for the people paid?
That is a universal truth.
So it doesn't matter whether it's somebody making $100,000 or if they're making $50?
That's right. Which is not to say that everybody's happy with their compensation. Nobody ever thinks they're paid enough.
Right.
So when, so when you look at the attributes, anywhere from 10 to 50 attributes, in terms of employee satisfaction, you know, salary's always, you know, low, but in terms of actually retaining somebody, it's, it's not a high factor. It's not, not even on the radar, the top five.
I guess that's, I mean, that's counterintuitive to me, but you, I think you'd like to see more of that, but I take your work, and that's what the study shows.
So, yeah, so, but that's, but so I guess what I'd like to know from the staff is, you mentioned lifeguards, and I don't know if there really is an issue as it relates to attracting some of these positions, but I don't know that it's, to some position. Yeah. And maybe it's not all 100 seasonals.
I hate to drag this meeting on even longer, but
29.
Certainly.
Yeah.
It should have been done a half hour ago. Yeah, we compete with City of Madison for seasonals in, in Dane County. And City of Madison starts at 13-something for lifeguards, we start at 875. So it's a huge area of attraction to try to attract candidates to work at our outdoor pool, to the extent that we went to offering a free lifeguard certification class. Normally, people have to pay between $200 and $300 to get certified. We will cover that cost because we have a rock star in Missy Kozorski who can do it, but they have to work for us for a couple shifts, you know, for the summer. So it works. I don't know how she does it every year, but it's, it's definitely a challenge. I think we'd all like to pay our seasonals more money if we can. We have, you know, we have permanent, permanent staff, part-time staff, that, you know, the fight for 15, you know, my wife works in HR, to find, if you want to find a job and make $15 to $20 an hour in Dane County, you absolutely can. And so the challenge to get to that below, that 10 to 15, is almost impossible to find qualified, even at seasonal level, is what we're seeing over the last couple of years is, it's definitely a challenge. There's just not as many kids that need to work. Kids being high school, college kids.
Right.
So it's, you know, I think you could, for our pool staff, you could go to, you know, we're at 875, you go to probably $12 and it would be, that might be enough to where we won't have to scramble as much as we would. You know, a dollar, 50 cents, it'll help, it may not, it's not going to be able to compete with, you know, Madison.
Right. Well, so, but given, okay, so just, let's just take the pool then for a minute that you just mentioned to me. It seems to me that if we're talking about, what did you say you're paying, 8-something?
We start at 875 for lifeguard.
Okay, so if you start at 875 and you're giving, because there, Doug, according to your amendment, you're saying anybody earning less than $15 an hour, 15 or less, you're only going to give 50 cents to. That means that the, all these, the people that we're talking about, just as this example, we're talking about bringing them up to 925. If Madison's paying 13-something, that's not going to get us anywhere.
Well, the Second Amendment actually would provide for a dollar an hour, which is still not, but, you know, it would take us a while to dig into this hole, and I don't think we can dig out of it in one year. I mean, I would be, you know, I could see us coming back and doing something similar to this and sort of build it into the typical, you know, way we do compensation to bring these, the wages up. I don't know that we're ever going to be to where we're, you know, like competing with what the City of Madison pays, but, yeah, I hear what you're saying, but 50 cents an hour gets us closer. If we do it again next year, if it's closer, I don't know.
Alder Moore, question?
I agree, and I think that's, the pool example is actually a wonderful example, with the idea of, we need, in my opinion, we need to take a targeted approach and not just an across-the-board approach. And I think that's the concern that we've had, that's a concern that I've had with how we apply some of the rate increase, although we know that not all positions necessarily get the same 1.75 in all areas. But, I mean, But, I mean, to both points, I'm not sure making a small dent that doesn't make a substantial change is the right move, rather than having a targeted approach that identifies certain positions that we do not feel are being adequately compensated, and how we're addressing that. So, to the previous item that I wasn't supportive of tonight, of looking at the wider benefits that, these are exactly the items that I would want to see on there, and I know many of our staff have these targeted requests, but to me, that's where we should be spending our time and energy, and not looking for additional compensation areas, when we have real-life examples right in front of us that we could be addressing, rather than trying to find additional items to be targeting. I can't support any of these until we, we do that. If we're, if we're handing out small items across the board, we are never going to target the issues that we have.
Alder Spade? And then Alder Kitzler?
I guess I would just say that I'd like to see a study that suggests that, you know, people that are making below a living wage are the same as professionals that are deciding between whether or not to take the fifty thousand dollar job or the sixty thousand dollar job. I think it's different, and I, I think Jake could speak to the fact that the reason you have a lot of turnover in these positions is because when a better opportunity comes along, and you're going to get an extra two dollars an hour, and that's a twenty percent increase in your compensation, I mean, you're going to take that two, that twenty percent increase in your compensation. And, and while I appreciate what Alder Homquist is saying, I think this is an example of where, you know, if we're going to arbitrarily raise a salary, I think at the bottom of our pay scale is where we need to be doing it, because I don't think it makes sense that we're asking people to work for us at minimum wage or at close to minimum wage. And again, I think it speaks to the values of this community. And, and again, I mean, I've, I put my money where my mouth is, so I get it, like, what in my own business is not the taxpayers, it's a choice I make, but I don't pay less than fifteen dollars an hour.
Right.
For my least skilled.
Right.
You know, guys.
Right.
And that's, but that's what I believe, and so that's what I do, and I think, and I'm, I'm not asking, nor is Alder Wood asking, that the city pay fifteen dollars an hour just out of the gate, we can't, you know, that, that's not doable. But I think raising the bottom is, is a good thing to do, and it is a productive thing to do, and it just slowly, if we do this year after year, and hopefully we can get, you know, buy-in with the mayor for future budgets, or the city administrator to do something like this, in recognizing that we actually do need and want to retain people who are doing those sorts of jobs. And I'm sure if we could look at the data, we would see it's harder to retain the people that are coming in for those summer jobs. You know, when they get the chance to go someplace where they can make better money, they do it. And those are people that are getting the free lifeguard training at Manona that you and I are paying for, the taxpayers, and then they're going, and they're going to cash in and work at Madison. Now, who got the best end of that deal?
Right, so let me be clear, the reason why I asked who this applied to is that I had no idea what the basis was, so I had no idea whether the basis, first of all, that it applied to the pool, or applied to lawn mowers, or applied to people in the senior center, who it applies to, okay, so that was question number one. And question number two, I had no idea what they get paid to begin with as a basis, so I had no idea what the basis was, we were already close to competitive, or whether, and we're obviously are paying close to minimum wage. So I'm not suggesting, just so, to be clear, I said from the very beginning, I share the same value. So, you know, appreciate not getting lectured on the value of minimum wage. What I, what I was trying to get to is what we pay as a city, and, and I share Alder Homquist's view, that rather than just across-the-board raises, that we look at particularly those skilled positions, for example, lifeguarding, other things where you need additional certifications, you know, where a higher wage may well be warranted. There are, I'm guessing, and I don't know, because I don't know every single position in the city, but I'm guessing there are some positions in the city where, where increase might be less warranted, for instance, there's another amendment here for people making the fifteen or over, or might be less warranted than, than those that we're talking about around the pool, and I think we, because we can't get to a competitive wage, we can't get to fifteen dollars an hour necessarily overnight, then it might make more sense to look at staggering, and, and investing more strategically or tactically to be able to, to accomplish the same thing, or similar thing.
Alder Kitzler?
Yeah, I don't want to rehash what Alder Spade just said, but, you know, I look at these amendments, whichever one we look at as baby steps moving in the right direction, giving everybody, you know, at the same level. Again, you know, budgets reflect values. Doug, I have a question, did you ask department specifically, or did you just look at the salary levels and do, and across the board?
Uh, no, I just did, and across, across the board.
Okay, and then, you know, the other thing I was going to say is, you know, we can only do this and, you know, in the next year, work with department to do a targeted strategy as well, so we could do both at the same time.
Right. I guess I would just say that, first of all, I mean, there is, I guess there's, first of all, the mayor knew I was going to make, propose something like this when she was working on her budget, and I think there's a good likelihood the raise might have been a little more for, instead of one point seven five, if that, she didn't think I was going to propose something like this, so we give her credit.
Well, I'm not sure if that, keep in mind that, when I was figuring out the budget, by the time I figured in the one point seven five, we had fifteen thousand dollars less.
Right.
After that, we had this additional seventy-five, and Mark found some more, so we didn't have any money.
Right.
No, it's, we wouldn't be sitting here, if the original budget I proposed, if we hadn't found that extra money, we wouldn't be sitting here even talking about any of this, because there isn't any money.
Right.
So.
Okay, but, you know.
I did know you were talking about it, though, that's the reason I didn't really even think about including it, because there just wasn't any money.
So I guess I'll just try to close this out by saying, I guess, I do see it as targeted, it's targeted at the people who don't make very much money who work for the city. And second of all, at least the First Amendment, we're talking about seventy-two or seventy-three hundred dollars, add them in eleven million dollar budget. The only one that's, to me, is, you know, particularly significant in dollar terms is the second one of doing a dollar an hour for under fifteen, and that's nineteen eight three oh. And I think Mark had suggested if we went seventy-five cents an hour, that would be about double, that would be about the fourteen, but we don't have an exact number for that.
Anyone else? Okay, then I think we're going to go back and start with number three. Did someone say something? And we're going to take these one by one. So amendment three. Which is for eighty-three thousand seven hundred twenty dollars to add one full-time fire paramedic staff position. Is there a motion?
Move approval?
Second.
Any discussion?
I would move to amend this, to delay the hiring authority to July one.
I'll second that.
Okay, so.
What date was that? I'm sorry.
July one.
July one, thank you.
So do they have to accept that?
No.
That's just a totally separate one.
It needs to be voted on.
So should we?
I have a question.
Alder Moore, please?
And Chief Sullivan, so when we talk about our hiring pool, and looking at qualified candidates, and knowing if there are qualified candidates, and when that hiring could take place, it was, by understanding, if I understood a previous discussion, that there are applicants in the pool currently that?
We currently have a list of two qualified applicants that the Police and Fire Commission has interviewed. This list is good for a year. We establish these lists almost every year, so that in case we do have somebody leave, we can hire somebody immediately. We do have a list established, that person can start as soon as the position is approved. One of the things that we, we risk losing the candidates if we push off till July first. They are applying other places, so we do have two very qualified candidates, so.
And Chief, when the candidates that end up in the pool, is there a, a season in which graduation occurs in programs to make them be available for new hires?
Um, not really, because they've, we require that they have their National Registry Paramedic, and that, they, they give those exams, Chief, monthly?
They're on demand, but I do them all year round.
Yeah, so, I mean, the point of this is to, to make it so that we, you know, it's less cost this year, and then this position will be there likely forever into the future.
And these two together will add about a hundred and fifty thousand, a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars automatically to next year's budget.
No, we're just talking about.
I know, but if we were to do them both full-time?
Right, yeah, we couldn't do, couldn't afford to do both fire and dispatch.
So next year, it would be that much, if we hired them both part-time now?
That's right, yeah, it would take up most of what we otherwise have available under the levy, if we, if we added them both, um, full-time.
And that assumes that the transportation aid is not going to change?
There are always a lot of assumptions.
Yeah.
We found seventy-four thousand dollars at the last minute.
Alder Moore?
I'm just, I'm just a little confused, since we appear to have two amendments on the table right now, so I just, I'd like some clarity around process, do we need to vote down one before we take up the other?
Yeah, the discussion right now is, is debating the amendment to delay the hiring authority to July first. There is not a vote.
For the firefighter position only.
And then depending on how that goes, we vote on the original.
Right, but the original amendment to hire a full-time firefighter, who made the, who made the amendment and who seconded?
Alder Homquist and Alder Kour.
Okay, so then, in order for a Second Amendment to be on the floor, to delay it, don't we have to vote on Homquist, or doesn't?
This is an amendment to that amendment, so we would vote on, on this amendment first, and then we'd go back to the main amendment unless there are other amendments, and eventually at the end of the night, we'll go back to vote on the entire budget, if we have.
My understanding was, is that the person who made the amendment and who seconded the original amendment had to approve an amendment to their amendment before we could vote on it? I didn't know you could just jump in.
That's, we, that's sort of, Robert, we can't, that's informally, we allow friendly amendments, that's what we've done historically, and, so.
And most we don't vote on, so.
I don't think this would be accepted.
Well, and, I mean, I, I just speak to process, I mean, it's not a friendly amendment, which is to say, it's asking that we not do one thing and do another, and ultimately, I think we're going to be authorizing some money for a firefighter, and so the, the issue is, you know, is it a full-year salary, or is it less than that? And so there's no way to have that discussion, other than right now, because, I mean, one, one possibility is we might authorize nine months of the position. I mean, you know, you could hire on April first, probably not a great day to get a job, but.
Alder Kitzler?
I was just going to say, and actually, not to hard remember it, but what Alder Spade brought up, the nine months for potentially the firefighter, and then six months for the dispatcher would get us ninety-six thousand three hundred and five dollars and fifty cents, so that would be well under, and still give us room to potentially do another amendment as well. So there are other options, as well.
Good point. Does anyone have any further comments? Want to propose anything else?
Well, we vote on this one, and then there could be another amendment.
So then they could vote, okay. All right, well then, all in favor of amending, of voting, all in favor of the amendment to move the hiring date to July first, say aye.
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 All opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
So that is four noes? Okay, so we are back to adding full-time position, I'm sorry, Andrew?
I was just going to say, and I'll propose an amendment to make it nine months for the firefighter, so that would be an April first start date, and, well, that's the one for this one.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor of making it an April first start date, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. All right. So now we will move on.
Yeah, I was going to say. We never get to eat the sausage, you know? It's like, you don't get to smell the sausage.
Are you, are you set? So we are going to hire a firefighter on April first.
So actually, we need to vote on the.
The vote needs to be made on the main motion.
On the main motion.
As amended.
Oh, okay, all right. But we, so do we need another motion for that?
Nope, that's been made.
All right. I'll get this all eventually.
And we would do a roll call in this, I believe.
Can we get the dollar value?
We don't.
No, I don't think we need to roll color this, we'll meet it on the final.
All right, all in favor?
Less than sixty-three thousand.
I have sixty-two thousand seven hundred and ninety.
Yes.
Would you say that, man? Sixty-two, seven, ninety.
It's seven ninety. All right, all in favor of the original amendment as amended? Please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. All right, we are moving on to amendment six. Eighteen dash oh six, to add a new dispatcher at a cost of sixty-seven thousand thirty-one dollars, this is for the full year, this is put forth by Alder Wood. Is there a motion to approve?
I would move to add a full-time dispatcher beginning July one.
I'll second that.
Second.
So that's an amendment to the amendment, Joan, even though, oh, we did, that's right, because we did move originally, a long time ago we moved.
No, this is the, I didn't, I'm not going to offer the amendment that's in the packet because.
Okay, so you're removing that amendment?
Yeah, I'm just doing it for a half-year.
All right.
Approve this at beginning of July first, and we need amended figures again?
Yeah. Approximate.
Thirty-three thousand five hundred and fifteen and fifty cents.
Yeah.
We'll call it thirty-four.
Yeah.
All right, there's a motion by Alder Wood, and a second by Alder Spade, is that correct?
Yes, Alder Wood, Alder Spade.
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
Is that what you got?
All right, Mark, do you want to show us where we are right now?
Purgatory.
Yeah. Yeah.
At best.
That's hilarious.
Yes. I almost said number four.
96 something?
Don't we have to find anything else?
Nothing. We don't have one.
And so-
We had 96. We had 96,305.
96,305. 90,000?
9,513.
Oh, that's what we have left.
9,513.
Okay. All right. We will move on to Amendment 7.
Move approval?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Alder Holmquist?
Although I know we have a desire to spend every last penny, I would encourage us to take this just shy of $10,000 and rather than applying it across the board at these salary ranges, that we go back and look at targeted positions and if they are out of the range for compensation or difficult to attract qualified staff in targeted positions, that we come back and look at a amendment at a future date of, for the just shy of $10,000. So, I encourage you to vote no for this amendment with the idea of, for our budget purposes, applying the fund balance to bring us to the levy limit. And then with the idea of we can come back at a future date and have a more targeted approach to positions that are difficult to fill due to initial compensation.
Alder Moore, did you have something?
No, I mean, I would certainly, if that, I don't know if that's a formal amendment, but I certainly-
It would basically encourage us to vote no on this amendment and direct staff to do that piece of looking at department by department, who falls within these categories and what are the positions and what are the challenges around those positions and report back to us to have a more specific, you know, this position is difficult to fill and really what we would need to be competitive to attract qualified staff would be this targeted amount.
And I would, I would go so far, at least as far as I'm concerned, I would go so far as to say, you know, I'm not, I'd be happy to go to spend the full $10,000, the whopping $10,000 that we have left. But, but I would like to see it targeted first where it needs to go to make those positions more competitive. And then if we have some leftover where we can raise some other votes up, fabulous. But I just think it would be more appropriate than a blanket approach.
Alder Kitzler, did you have something?
I was just going to say, I mean, I think, you know, we need to continue to look at compensation across the board. I think this is, you know, a step in the right direction. Again, talking about baby steps. So, I think we can do this and, you know, continue to look at a targeted approach in the coming year and hopefully do something next year as well.
Alder Wood, did you have?
Yeah, again, I guess I'd, you know, say, this is basically, it's not going to raise anybody's vote too much, but it's going to raise the lowest-paid city employees a little bit more than they would otherwise be. And it's $7,324 out of a total like $11 million city budget. And we can absolutely talk about other compensation issues. I'm just saying, you know, I think they need to deserve more than 1.75% when they're making 10 bucks an hour. So-
Alder Spade?
I would just echo that exactly. I think, I think we can do both things. You know, we can walk and chew gum and we can say, yes, we need to, we need to raise our lowest-paid staff positions a little more than the rest because it's hard to get by making that, that small of an amount. But then I do agree that we also need to be more strategic. But again, that's going to, I think that as we look at this compensation issue, and I know this is challenging, but I mean, it's just like why we look at any of these other issues like marketing or the benefits package. I mean, we have limited resources, but we need to make sure that we're, if we're going to shift them around, let's shift them around with intention. And that's why some of these other studies are being done. But I, I think it's the right thing to do to, to raise that minimum.
Anything else? All right, all in favor of approving Amendment 7, which would raise, provide a minimum 50 cent an hour raise for employees earning $15 an hour or less, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
All right, motion passes.
All in favor?
This is walking on the internet or something?
Okay, so that essentially spends all of our money. So, what happens with these two other amendments?
I'm not going to-
Still take them up?
Yeah.
You'll remove those? Okay.
So, with apologies, I need to go back because I, I guess I thought I, what I was hearing was that we were shifting that last amendment to say we wanted it to be targeted. I thought you said, I thought Chad was concurring with you that it, that we could target, but at the same time raise everybody at the bottom that needed to be raised. I thought that's what we were voting on.
No, it was the original amendment. So, if that was-
Okay. Well, then if you could change my vote to nay, that would be great.
I feel like I have Robert's rules about changing a vote.
Yeah, you can.
Can you change your vote? Doug says yes.
All right, Doug says yes. All right, so your vote is against. You're against Nancy?
Yeah.
Alder, Alder Moore?
It can at least be reflected in the minutes that she wanted to change, that she should, yeah, whatever. Anyways.
All right, and Alder Wood has withdrawn Amendments 8 and 9. All right, so now we will vote on adopting the 2018 operating budget as amended. We already have a motion and a second on that.
The motion was by Alder Spade, seconded by Alder Moore.
Any further discussion?
I just want to say that if anybody doubts whether we're spending tax dollars well as the new kid or new Alder on the block or one of two new Alders on the block, you know, it's pretty obvious from tonight, this is a very tight budget for which I know the staff, with a special shout-out to the Finance Director and of course to the Mayor, deserves a lot of credit. Cause as Chad pointed out at the beginning of this meeting, our hands are tied. And, and I, you know, I've been an executive director and a consultant to organizations with much larger budgets and much bigger staffs and, and, you know, I've combed through this budget. You know, there's just nothing soft here. It's not like there's like a lot of slush in the corners that we can be shifting around. So, I just want to applaud everybody for slogging through it. And I know you do it every year, but it's hard because we have a lot of priorities. We have a lot of things we want to do. Anyone else?
What are we going to do with the other $1,189? I think we should throw a party.
Do we want to have, Mark, show us what this amounts to, first of all, in terms of the mill rate and the-
Yeah. So, total of city tax, profit tax, lovely, would be $7,464,691. Here are $2,189,111. The mill rate is $6.48 per thousand. Average home increase is $120,000 if you have the average assessed, which was last year $283,900. Or, last year and this year it's $295,200. So, average increase would be $120.90.
You said $120,000.
Yeah.
$120.90.
On a $289,000-
$295,000. We should compare it to last year, $283,000.
Can't we spend the $2,000 on lifeguards?
We'll move that one later.
All right. I think any other comments? Okay, all in favor of approving-
We need a roll call.
Uh, the budget, I'm sorry. Please go to the roll.
Alder Kitzler?
Aye.
Alder Moore?
Aye.
Alder Coor?
Aye.
Alder Holmquist?
Aye.
Alder Spade?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Just say something about the budget. Couple things. Budgets will, the tax bills might go out a little late this year. Technically, the mayor has five days to approve the budget. So, she can veto it after, in five days. So, if she doesn't want to go back, she can typically veto it. We had one mayor who did go to the last minute and said not to veto it.
You have to veto the entire thing, right?
You veto the whole thing and you come back here. It hasn't happened, but good. The county budget's going to improve tonight. Hopefully it's going to improve tonight. And, because we do all the districts and time to get everything out, it's not going to be for another couple of weeks before the tax bills go out. So, it's going to be a little bit of time because the county's getting their stuff out and they have the same thing. They got their five days to wait, the county exec does for his budget. So, there is going to be some wait time on this. One thing that did happen, I don't know if you're aware of, with the state, there might, there won't be a state number this year. The state is no longer putting the, because the force tax was done through the state. So, there won't be a state portion on your tax bill. So, that's something new for this year. Other than that, that's all I have.
Okay. And I'd like to thank you, Mark, for all of your help on this. You've been unbelievable, really. All right, Alder Spade?
I just want to thank all the city staff that are here tonight. I mean, I, you know, I'm incredibly proud of the work that each and every one of you do. I mean, you guys make us proud. It's, it's an honor and a privilege to serve on this council because of all of you. And the fact that you're here means a lot to us as elected officials. I realize it's your livelihood at stake here and I know none of us take this lightly. I hope you feel that we honor that in this process because I certainly feel like you all honor us by your service to the city. So, thank you for that.
All right. Now, we'll move on to more mundane matters. Ordinance 11-17-692, an ordinance amending Chapter 18, Section 17 of the Code of Ordinances related to the Sustainability Committee membership. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval?
Second. Any discussion? So, we'll be moving it from eight to six. Citizen members? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Under new business, Item 2A, consideration of applications for 2017, 2018 Class B liquor and Class B fermented malt beverage licenses for TL McGwigan, McGuigan LLC doing business as Angelo's Manona, 5801 Manona Drive, Manona, Wisconsin, 53716. This is put forth by the License Review Committee and there's a request for immediate action.
Move to suspend the rules and take this item out of order?
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Move approval?
Second.
Alder Wood or Joan?
And maybe this will be explained. I'm just curious of why is, this is original, not a renewal and-
It's a sale of the business to a new, so there's a new license over?
And is it-
May I?
Yes.
Provided for, there were no changes to the operation. It's a current staff member who's worked there for several years, has purchased the business from the owner. So, no operations will change. However, he, he organized a new LLC, so it does require new, an original application as it's a new entity now that's only, so nothing will change with Angelo's, but I'm here to qualify. There's nothing on it.
Anything else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item 2B, consideration of Resolution 17-11-2226, approving a city school district video operations joint, city school district video operations joint ownership agreement put forth by the city administrator.
This is something that we worked on with the school superintendent and the media committee. The goal was to rework this agreement to better define the city's media relationship with the school district, to clarify which entity pays for what in terms of personnel, supplies and equipment. And we did, we reworked the 2018 budget, which we just approved now, to split the radio and television accounts so that we can better track and charge out some of these expenses to the school district to make sure that we're each paying our fair share. And we reconfigured the salary splits for the personnel in the media department to better reflect what we're actually spending their time on. And there is an appendix in there that shows a work plan for the media program for the school district and the city. And again, with the goal to make sure it's accurately reflected in the agreement and the charges. This agreement has approval from the Community Media Committee and the school superintendent. He should be taking it to their board tomorrow for consideration. And it's also been reviewed and approved by the city's attorney. And finally, the school's contribution to the media program will actually increase as is reflected in the budgets that were adopted. And again, a reflection of the amount of actual work that the program is providing for the school, for the city.
And they are actually going to be buying some equipment too?
Yes.
Beginning next year, which is not happening. And I mentioned this in joint finance, but essentially what's happening is we're, they're contracting with us to do a certain, provide a certain coverage of a certain number of events. Whereas before, we just kind of did whatever. So, we were trying to get more of a handle on just what we are videotaping and broadcasting and so that, partly so we have a little bit of time available to do something on the city's end in terms of video production as well. So-
NWMO did not exist when the original agreement was done. So, that was another big factor in shifting some of the time and the costs around. Again, this should better reflect it and we can change the appendices every year without having to change the master agreement. So, it'll make it a little more flexible and be able to keep up with the, with the budgets as they, as they are going forward.
So, any questions? Alder Holmquist?
I only see one issue and that has to do with MG Hockey wasn't listed as anything that would be covered.
I think you're willing to request that. Bring your concerns to the Community Media Committee.
I made that request last year that they were eager to do all the basketball events and yeah, I believe even some wrestling events, but not MG Hockey. So, good thing we have another two weeks before we have to vote on this. Maybe there'll be a reconsideration.
Please, we don't want to change it anymore.
No.
It's taken nine months.
It's gone back and forth numerous times between lawyers and the school and the city and media. So-
Any further comments or questions about this? All right, then we will move on to reports of committees, commissions, boards, et cetera. Alder Coor?
Nothing to report.
Alder Holmquist?
Public safety for this month has been canceled due to a lack of agenda items needing action.
Alder Spade?
Nothing to report, really.
Alder Wood? I'm sorry, Alder Kitzler?
Anything to report?
Alder Wood?
Just briefly, Landmarks Commission recommended approval of an ordinance change to make the establishing, so that the city would be a certified local government with regard to historic structures. That has to go to the Plan Commission for review. I think it's been there once. Land, this- Landmark, that's, that's not entirely been, um, there's not agreement, let's put it that way between the two committees yet, so Landmarks will be looking at it again in January and then I think it'll go back to plan. One thing that if we do get the, ultimately that passes in some acceptable form to the state, we'd be a certified local government and eligible for state grants and we've already went and applied for one to do a citywide architectural survey, so if we end up, the ordinance doesn't go through and stuff, then we'll just withdraw it, but that's out there, so.
Alder Moore?
I had my first facilities committee meeting last week. It's the first time I've met since, since I was elected and the mayor and Leah and I met also last week to talk about process and collateral materials around onboarding for committees and commissions as well as for Alders that are, so I'm just trying to get clarity and support around some of that stuff, so some of us, for instance, that start aren't totally clueless when we start. And I appreciate the time that Leah and the mayor took, so to be continued, as they say.
City Clerk?
Candidate packets are ready for pickup. The seats up for reelection are Alder's, Holmquist, Kitzler and Core. Nomination papers can be circulated starting December 1st and are due January 2nd. Non-candidacy declarations are due December 22nd.
City Administrator Little?
Um, I had sent an email out to some folks, getting your feedback on whether you like the idea of bumping up our city council time to slightly earlier.
Oh, yeah.
So if you haven't gotten back to me, please let me know, we'll be doing a little cleanup ordinance and nice work with the budget, you guys are so cordial and it's great to see it in action, all these debates, so, good discussion.
All right. I want to thank everyone who worked on the budget. It was a very long process and I know a lot more now than I did in April. We hope to skip our December 18th meeting, so if there's anything coming up on your committee agendas or something that, I don't know, keep that in mind. I guess we'd rather try to keep the agenda clear or cover what we need to next on the 4th. As Alder Moore mentioned, she and I met and talked about this onboarding process and also just a whole, I've been talking about coming up with a little more detailed process of how we make committee appointments, how I make committee appointments and so we've got a rough draft that we're working on and hope to finish, you know, fairly soon, within the next month or shortly after the new year, I would assume, so.
I thought all Alders going through their year of cluelessness was kind of part of the Higgs process. It's kind of a tradition. They want to teach them stuff.
Yeah, administrators get it too.
All right. We have two appointments, Josh Peterson to the Facilities Committee, effective immediately through May of 2020, and Jeff Staver to the Community Development Authority, effective immediately through May 2021.
Move approval? Second.
Well, why don't we move approval and then you can make your...
Sure.
Is there a second?
Yes. Second.
Alder Spade, Alder Holmquist?
Um, I already shared with the mayor that I'm, I'm choosing to abstain from voting for the appointments due to the previous mentions about us having a process. I know that it's in, in play or the process is in process. I just feel obligated that I really can't, can't vote for appointments at this time until we have something in place.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna go ahead and vote for it, but I agree, I think we need, you know, just make sure that, that we don't get to the, when we have the big batch of appointments in the spring and we don't have a process in place.
And we will. That, that was my concern, has been getting something before the spring, reappointments and appointments or whatever and we've had these couple of things come up. I would point out that this Facilities Committee appointment, what, that's been empty for two and a half years. We've been trying to find someone and we've got a great candidate, Nancy's met with them and, so.
And that's part of the process.
Right.
Where somebody implies, somebody's the chair of the committee or the staff, you get to meet with that person, especially if you don't know them.
Yes. All right. So all in favor, Alder Spade?
Well, I, I had a question about another thing before we adjourned, so I just didn't want to...
Okay, well, let's do the vote and then we can ask it, okay?
You bet.
All in favor of approving the appointments, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
All right.
It'll be really quick, we're moving for adjournment, we're out of here.
Alder Spade?
So I just wanted to point out that the 1st of January is a Monday and of course, Martin Luther King Day is that 3rd Monday, and so I just wanted to ask the question or think about it, or does that mean we'll be meeting on the 2nd and the 16th in January? Okay. Okay.
So both Tuesdays, 1st and 3rd Tuesdays in January.
All right.
Before I adjourn, I just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and now we don't have to worry about the budget anymore, so. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.